But state doesn't get, I mean, state goes on those penalties. It's a political party. They don't go to jail and pay for them to live. I don't know, they don't even have to pay for everything they pass. Maybe that's what they're gonna do. It's probably due to, it's probably getting the wrong people. People who are leasing to do it, but.
You did, didn't you? This whole, this is gonna look like a no deal.
That's right. Alright guys, we're gonna go ahead and get started. We'll start with our invitation. Mr. Frank Downe is gonna lead us.
Let us bow our heads and pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you this day. Some of us have heard about the shooting out in California where children were killed this afternoon. We pray that you will just send down your angels and that they will give comfort and hope and peace to those who have lost their little ones. We pray, Father, also, that you will be able to this council members, every one of them, Father, and just bless them, and we thank them for their participation here to be a part of the city and to give up their lives and their time to help others. We pray, Father, that you will just put your loving hand upon all of our firemen here in West Fork and police, the ambulance service, all of those, Father, who protect us, and let us just be thankful that they give up their times and put themselves in the front of danger to protect us. Pray that tonight's meeting, that you will send down your Holy Spirit, that the Spirit will come down and speak to each and every heart here, and may we, may we, Father, just pray that you will lift up this city of West Fork, Arkansas, that sits in this beautiful location. We ask that you will just lift us up as a shining example of a hill that has a temple on top of it, Father, and we will be looked upon by other cities that they would like to emulate what we are and what we're all about. Thank you, Father, for all you've done for us this week, and for watching over us, and give us all a mission from you that you would have us to do for you. And we ask all of this in Jesus' holy and precious name. Amen.
Thanks, Frank. So at this time, we have a flag behind us, we have some children who are gonna lead us in the pledge of allegiance. You guys can start whenever you're ready.
Pledge of Allegiance. Jesus Christ, God, the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, guys. Alright, we're gonna go ahead and convene our meeting. Start off with a roll call of our aldermen. Misty Cottle.
Here.
Anita Lowery.
Here.
Jeff Upton.
Here.
Jan Frog Morton.
Here.
John Collins.
Here.
Kira Hungate.
Here.
Don Rollins.
Here.
Joe Toward.
Here.
The city attorney, mayor, president. And so, guys, we're meeting here in the community center tonight to accommodate the crowd. If you can't hear us, please ask us to speak up, okay? We don't have the sound system or the close proximity that we do in our regular city meeting hall, so let us know. When you guys come up to address the council, which I'm sure a lot of you are here to do, you have a microphone, so we will be able to hear you. If I'm screaming, let me know, and I'll try to tone it down a little bit, okay? But council members, just keep that in mind. If you guys ask questions or speak, be sure and speak up so that residents can hear. Okay? So first item on the agenda is approval of our minutes from the October 10th meeting. We need a motion and second to approve those, if there's any changes that need to be made.
Second.
Motion and second, did you get those, Kristin? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We also have the adoption of our agenda. Are there any changes that need to be made yet? Motion and second to approve that.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed say no. Motion carries. Already got us out of order, haven't we, Kristin? So up next is our public forum. In the public forum, we allow two minutes for speakers to address the council. During this public forum, we may ask questions of you, but we won't take action on any items that you're here to discuss, that you bring up before us, okay? So is there anyone that would like to address the council? Yes, ma'am? Hang on just a second. Jennifer? Go ahead, Eleanor.
Sorry, I have to leave, so. Hi, my name is Eleanor Dowlett, and my husband and I live right next door to the property being considered, and we will receive the most impact from the proposed venue. When we first heard about the plan, we understood that the building would be on the far left corner of the property. Now, the 8,000 square foot metal building is actually much closer to our home in Stockburger. While it is a fact that our family does not want a business operating right next door to have our home and land lose value, there are other issues to be considered. First of all, democracy. At the two previous meetings, there have been many people expressing their opposition to a business operating in a residential area. All of you are serving in an elected position for the city and the people of West Fork. But this instance, it seems that people should take precedence. Carolyn has a dream to operate a event venue. We do not know if it will fail or succeed. What we do know is that if the conditional use permit is granted, the dreams of all the residents in the immediate area will be broken. People living in this area made a conscious decision to buy land and homes in this area and consider it very special. Our dreams of living in the country peacefully with serenity and beautiful scenery will no longer be possible. If the permit is not approved, however, Carolyn can still seek fulfillment of her dream in another appropriate location. This is a third of the open forums held to hear the viewpoint and opinions of the people who will be impacted by that business in a residential area, and I believe that 99.9% of the people are opposed to that. We don't have anything against Ms. Carolyn, but council members, as I lead to go to a previous commitment, I plead with you to accept the decision in the voice of the people you have been elected to represent. I ask you to listen to me and everyone here tonight who is opposed to this. Several of you visited the site and know how close it will be to our home, and I've appealed to all of you on a personal level. Please put yourself in our position. Would you want an 8,000 square foot steel building right next to your home? And lastly, we all are in agreement that West Fork needs to grow. We love our city. We need more money for our government and schools than not in this manner. The business being proposed is absolutely not consistent with the residential area. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Carolyn. Let's hold the applause, this is public forum. We're not making speeches to be clapped at. We'll all have our chance to speak. Jennifer, did you want to address it? Sure.
My name's Jennifer Sims. I'm the chair of the Economic Development Beautification Committee, and I'm just here for my monthly update. The welcome sign, as you've seen, is in place. The etching is, should be done by the end of the month. On October the 28th, we had our first Tree City giveaway, and we gave away about 65 trees and shrubs, and we should thank the friends of the library who helped us, the city staff that helped us, and HARPs who provided the refreshments. We are continuing the Memorial Project, and our next meeting, and the last meeting of the year will be on Tuesday, next Tuesday, a week from tonight. And the Small Town Big Light contest is going forward, and if anyone in the community or otherwise would like to serve as a judge, we would be happy to entertain that. Thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer. Any questions for Jennifer? Would anybody else like to address the council? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, my name is Kristen Cantrell, and I have five small children, and we live very close to Stockburger, and we frequently go for walks down that road, and I just would be saddened if there was a business there. We moved to West Fork from Colorado just this last year, and we were looking for just the kind of street that it is right now. We love it. People can't understand why we would move from Colorado, and I say, "Well, you've never been to West Fork, it's just perfect." And so I would just ask that you just think about that, I'm sure you guys have already, and just thank you for considering the desires of the people that live there. Thank you.
And so there's gonna be an opportunity to discuss the conditional use permit a little bit further in the agenda, so would anybody else like to address the council for something other than the conditional use permit? I promise, I'm not gonna catch you out, we'll give everyone their turn to speak, I just, if we could limit this to other projects, and then when we get to the conditional use, we'll bring everybody up. Was there someone else that wanted to address the council on something other than the permit?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, I'll get to you in just a second, sir.
Hi, Pete Cloud, pastor of First Baptist, and live on Boyd Street. There's a house almost at the corner of Boyd Street and McKnight, not the corner, but one back from the corner, that has been vacated, has tons of junk in the back, and that's been kinda ongoing for a while. I know the police have been there and talked to people, and then the people are gone, and so I didn't know who to address or talk to about helping, you know, I'd be willing to help even, you know, to get that cleaned up, but it's one back from the corner of McKnight and Boyd.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Does that feel Martin President?
Mmm.
Or Madden?
No.
Which one?
On McKnight?
Yes.
It's on McKnight.
Okay. I missed that description. So was, did you ask anyways where was that lived? Does anybody know if it was a rental property?
The lady that left with, had three boys, according to the people that I met and talked to, they were kinda sub-lating from them for a period of time.
Chief, do you have anything to add to that?
They left because we wrote them three tickets on the property. Just gotta show up before people left town, I guess.
Okay.
But as far as who owns the property, we've not been able to find her, I don't believe. We thought she had kids in Greenland, but it turns out, yeah, well, where's she at?
So it's ongoing, we're still?
It's ongoing, we're working on it, but we gotta find somebody that owns her.
Right. Okay.
Well, I think Christie just said she's aware it's a foreclosure, so they assume it's a property process.
Okay.
They're working on it, yeah.
So at least you don't have the home across the sidewalk now.
That's exactly right. Thank you.
Alright. Sir, did you want to address the council?
It's Title III, McKnight.
My name is John Keller, 1008 Stockburger, and the main concern I have is that had it not been for a neighbor telling us or asking us if we were aware of the upcoming proposals, we wouldn't have known anything. There was nothing circulated, no explanation of what was about to take place, or at least proposed, and that kinda concerns me, that it sounds like something, something a little fishy going on, and I'd like some good clarification on what is proposed, what's transpired to date, and some of the details, what's going on.
Absolutely. And so, we have that marked as our first item of business when we get through our reports, and I'll give a summary of what has happened up to this date, as far as being notified, if you will. So we do not have a communication system in the city of West Fork to notify every resident, okay? We do have a council meeting the second Tuesday of every month at 6:30. But we follow the rules of law, as far as how do we, every one of these meetings, they don't even have to be, it's called FOIA, Freedom of Information Act. Since we have it every month, we don't have to put that out, but we've taken extra steps, and we do. We put it out on, Christie, where all do we put it out at?
Email, Facebook.
Email, Facebook, the city website?
Public information.
Yeah.
Okay, I stand corrected, I am in there, or why not?
No, no, not at all. But if you will, if you will give Christie your email address, she can add you to that list, and you will get that for every meet in the city. Absolutely.
And I did write a letter to the council for the last meeting.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like, yes, sir?
Greg Oleski, Greystone Subdivision. I apologize, I wasn't aware that there was a special meeting also. I looked on the website and I didn't.
Now, this is a regular meeting.
This is just a regular meeting, okay, so. I'm following up, I wasn't able to be here the last two meetings, and I brought up the water pressure issue from, I guess, city center, all through down McKnight. We're down from like 35 to 30 pounds. We just added five houses, two more going online before the end of the year, three more on the top of the hill by HARPs. I guess you've been gracious enough to listen to me all these past times, but I guess I'm to the point of, you know, addressing the water issue, coming up with some solutions short term and long term, and a timetable for this to happen, because there's only gonna be more houses put on the system, and it's deficient right now. Greystone was forced to be, to have an eight-inch line put in when they developed that subdivision, and I guess Mr. Johnson had a heck of a time cram-rotting that thing through because he was fought tooth and nail. But we're supplied by a six-inch main, and it's been repaired twice since I've lived here the three years, so the situation is deteriorating, it's getting worse, and I guess I'm asking where it is on a priority list of getting fixed. My only option right now is to go out and spend between $500 to $1,200 for equipment and have a private plumber put it in. Well, times 22 people in the subdivision that paid for all the updated systems to be put in, utilities underground, and we're not, you know, getting a full bang for our budget, so I guess that's my only question, and I know you've been talking about it with the one water tower being moved, and, you know, you're at a disadvantage because all your water system is so low to brown level, you know, I mean, even though we're up in a mountain, it's not, it's... And I guess my other question was, is how long has that line been in the ground? I mean, it's probably past its lifespan at this point, because all systems have a lifespan. I guess that's my question.
And so I don't have definite answers for it, as far as the timeline. I can tell you, this has been brought up to a water and sewer commission, they are actively working on it. There's several plans in place. Houses you referenced up behind HARPs, that's exactly what they are doing, is putting in a pump system to get pressure to where they want it. By state law, we have to get 20 pounds of pressure to the meter. Unfortunately, that's not a lot of pressure, and that's, that's...
No, at that point, you're almost not able to take a show of it.
Right. So it is, it is an issue we're addressing. We're looking for some state aid in trying to, obviously, the city does not, you know, we do not take in enough sales tax revenue to...
Well, that's the other flip side of the coin. I mean, you gotta attract business, and a big hint and rate dollars would not be able to sell alcohol. I mean, for restaurants and stuff, I don't know what the issue is, I've heard all kinds of different things, but that is not positive for the city.
And so...
I mean, we've gotta get in the 21st century. I mean, that would bring in money for the schools, tax money, additional things, fundraisers, all this other stuff that's gonna help build the city, you know, because you're gonna get surrounded, I mean, the overflow in all these other cities is gonna just swarm up.
Mr. Mayor, let me speak to that.
Sure.
You're right. You know, some things are old here and they need to be refurbished and improved. To put it in context, one of the things that we're trying to do is get away from the sewer plant down by a river that gets inundated every once in a while. Part of the challenge in not having enough resources, where do you start? Well, you wanna know what the order merit is. Right now, it's gonna be a challenging year for us trying to connect, but next year's gonna be really hard.
Some of the big stuff that we're putting in place for that system, that we all tie together correctly, so...
The only reason I spoke up is, we are working on it. We are addressing the issues, we're addressing the infrastructure, what needs to be there for us to grow, and we will work on the water lines, but the challenge is, you, with limited resources, you can't run in all directions at once. And we have a significant metric we have to get.
And I'm not, you know, I don't mean to put you on the spotlight, but...
No, it's not fair that way.
But I get short-term answer for me is to go to buy a pump and put it in, get on with it.
Honestly, it is. And, you know, it's one of those cases...
It's probably a few years on the line before that would even possibly happen, so. Alright, well, I just wanted to bring that point up again.
And I'm glad you did.
It was just kinda put in exclamation point, because I kinda figured out what I was gonna have to do on my own, and the rest of them had to figure it out on their own, so I appreciate the time you've done.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to address the council during the public forum? Yes, sir.
Hello, thank you, council. I'm Allen White. I live at 424 Stone Metal Lane. First I heard of this vote was Sunday afternoon, and I've lived in North Arkansas all my life. I own properties in Fayetteville, Arkansas. At one time, I lived within one block in a townhouse on Dixon Street, and I'm telling you, it was hell. I never, music going all night long, police cars, everything going. So then I started looking for a place to live, to get away from that. I still own a property there, I have a trust. We back West Fork, Arkansas, and we live at 424 Stone Metal Lane, just right down to where this project was being built. I'm not against business, I'm a businessman, I'm not against people having the opportunity to make money, but I am really against rezoning into a residential hour of the properties, and people invested lots of money into a commercial venue in there. There's plenty of other places to build a commercial venue. I'm not against the person trying to do that, I know what it takes to make money, but guys I didn't live in West Fork, we live next to a commercial unit within spitting distance of my house. I wish you would consider that. I've got a large investment over there, and I wanna protect it. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to address the council on something other than the conditional use? Alright, so we're gonna close the public forum, and we'll move into our business reports, and then we'll get to the reason why everyone's here tonight. Alright, so up first, Scott Oliver with the planning commission.
Hello, everyone. Took some notes, we are trying to compile our last three meetings, we've had turnover with the secretary, and taking notes. I think I've got them all up to date, I just need to, we need to vote on them and finalize them, that's gonna happen this Thursday. As of the last meeting, you were there, we spoke a little bit about some of the annexation processes from Dr. Jeff Hawkins at Regional Planner. The conditional use was, thought that it was tied to the owner, but it's not, it changed. We got clarification on that. We're going to start in the next few months looking at our codes, try to update ordinances and make suggestions, send it to the city council per vote. That's gonna take some work, because a lot of it's antiquated, and it's built off of what space, what all municipalities do in the state of Arkansas, and we wanna update them a little bit. We also have a speaker that came in from Fayetteville. He's a senior planner at their city, and we asked him a lot of questions about how to update our codes, compared to what they do versus what we need to do, and there's some confusion because they're a big town, it's a small town, what to do, we're a little landlocked, we've got a lot of mountains, and they do too. They've come up with some unique ways of zoning, so we picked his brains a little bit, we're gonna sit down with him some more. Talked about some mixed-use zoning to try to get some more applications to downtown area. Let's see, talked about city highway, West Fork, overlay, and that's it. Guys, got any questions?
I do. So you just said the conditional use permit doesn't go with the owner?
The conditional use, we have to get...
Stays with the land.
It stays with the land.
Okay, that's been misrepresented from the get-go there.
Mm-hmm, yeah. We checked into it at first, and got a little bit, that's what we thought.
Right. Where did you find that? Because I've been tearing the internet apart on all of this.
Well, the only way to get it, sometimes to get it from the regional planner.
So the regional planning?
Well, no, the regional planning just clarified what we thought. Original thought was that when an owner owned it, and they submitted a request for conditional use, and it was approved through the correct process, it went with that owner. So once you sold there, and its use was the way it was approved, that person had to come back in and submit another request for that conditional use. That's the way we thought, but it does not go with the, oh, it goes with the owner.
So once it's approved, this would then...
Right, and that goes into what you do. Do you rezone it? That might be the best way to think of it, or do you just keep applying conditional use after conditional use after conditional use?
Well, once you've lived in that, it's there, why do you...
Yeah. Well, you know, it's kinda that adage of why the fees fall after it's gone off. Once you build it...
So we rezone something and we get conditional permit, the fees and all that are totally different as well.
Yes.
You're losing money, you're gonna have to rezone something and then, or you're gonna be...
One of the most important things we do.
And then to me, when I read zoning things, there's a lot more things you have to do when you rezone it, that you do not have to meet criteria for a usual, and you don't use permit.
Right. A lot of the things, you know, one of the things we do is try to get clarification at the planning commission as best we can. We don't, we don't have the ear of the regional planner.
Right.
So we try to get that individual to kind of see us, or we make phone calls, and I've been up to his office before. We did our best at the time to make an educated guess on how to proceed with it. To be honest with you, when you investigate rezoning, that seemed difficult. So the next step was conditional use. We looked into the books to see how that worked. We thought we knew how it worked, and we recommended that as the next step, and proceeded on with that. The right thing to do is, we do the research, correct it, present it to you, and then we move on, and we try to figure out what to do with that. Any other questions?
Thank you, sir. Up next, John Riley, our librarian.
Good evening. Just wanted to give a quick update on our telescope.
Go ahead and raise that up, John.
Okay. It is checking out, and we got a waitlist of about 10 names, and we just wanted to, you know, promote this and let people know that we have a very nice telescope for checkout from the library, and especially if you have kids or are interested in learning more about space and stars, and you can take it home and point it up at the moon, and it was donated by an organization called Supporting STEM in Space, who has big plans of promoting space education in this area, and so it's probably about a $600 telescope, and it's going well, but we want everyone to know about it, and that we do have it available for checkout for one week at a time, and so get yourself on the waitlist, because it's Then also, in order of business, we have two openings on our library board, and we've, the board has made a recommendation to Mayor Cottle for one... the board has made a recommendation to Mayor Cottle for one name for tonight. We've recommended, the board recommends Judy Tiller's appointment to the board, and we so we put that before you.
And so, we're going to go ahead and, I'm going to recommend Judy Tiller during this, instead of adding this to the other business we had, we're going to go ahead and take care of that at this point. So, Judy Tiller has been recommended to the library board, and I would entertain a motion to approve her.
I'll make it.
With a motion in second, all's in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Any questions for John?
Hang in there, John.
Thanks, John.
All right, up next, Paula Welch.
I'm sitting in my closet.
Okay. Did you miss Blay?
I think she's just trying to set me up. She gets me down here and says, "You need to listen," and then she puts me on the podium. So, your report that we have for you, let me just start by saying it's been a very hectic month in the court department. We are trying our best to assist the police department without a secretary. So, don't ask us for anything up to date because it might not be ready. She did get a report to you, and we discovered while we were sitting there together, I need to update your numbers for you. We are up year-to-date at this point from last year, but let me give you those totals. So, over on the right at the top half of your, for the year-to-date totals, your year-to-date for now should be 2546, and your 16-year-to-date should be 2417. So, Paula has done a very good job. She's worked very hard. She had to unexpectedly go to Ohio for a death in the family. So, in the middle of everything, we just keep trudging along. So, that's what we do. I am going, I'll leave after court this Thursday to go to Little Rock for court training, which is part of what we do for continuing. That will add hours to my certification, which takes about three years, give or take, if you make every meeting. So, I'm carrying on with that. Love it. So, looking forward to that. And y'all have any questions?
Any questions for Vicki?
Thanks, Gus.
Thank you. Chief Nelson?
I don't think I can raise it. Yeah, I will. We've had 414 calls per service. We were down a little bit. Had 23 fourths, 235 citations, a warrant arrest, we're at 24. Our on-hue arrests were 13, with three felony and 10 misdemeanor. We have started to make a little graph here for the council, and it just will show month by month what our call load is. You can see what's busy and what's the slow month. You keep flipping, I want to get to some of the training. Myself and Langston have both, but Alice trained. We took that as playful. Berserk. So, hopefully with the blessing of the school, we'll start doing some of that. Officer Underwood did the marijuana leaf testing and has signed up for three other classes in some investigation spots. And Officer Goggins, Officer Goggins graduated the academy this month, at the same time got his master's degree in criminal justice, at the same time was squad leader and won the overall firearms for the Northwest Arkansas at 99.6%.
Wow.
So, I was pretty proud of him, and that's a lot of accomplishments in a short period of time. We also did the Safe Stocks, Safe, what do you call it?
Safe Stock?
Safe Stock. We did that fire department for the kids, and we spoke to the fifth graders during the national drug awareness report month.
You're Halloween, I want to commend Halloween, the fire department, Lex, next month.
Any questions?
Thanks, John. Who's next? Isaac hasn't made it yet. He's at another event tonight, and so he will be here later, and we may try to get him to give his report when he gets here. So, we'll skip to Parks Department. Chad?
I don't really have a whole lot to add on it in the packet. Just taking care of the day-to-day stuff, I've generally kept main notes in parks as well as trying to catch up on some of our office work and looking through, updating some of our boards and regulations stuff for some of our programs and things like that. Also doing some, been doing some file cleanup and getting rid of some stuff to make our move easier in short term. But the one thing I do want to update you on, my department as well as Isaac's department has worked quite a bit over the last couple of weeks, working on those Christmas lights. And I'm happy to report that we've made some strides and we're going to be able to put quite a few of the ones up along the railroad right away that we used to put up. We spent about $1,000, Christie, buying some new sockets and lights or bulbs. We had, we had quite a few, we had to get a few more, and then some strands of lights. And we've restrung several of them and worked on getting those up and going. So, I think it's going to, we're going to be able to get a good showing after. As well as our normal lights that we've been able to put on the poles, we've gone through those and gotten those, so they're going to look a little bit better this year also. So, we were able to do that at a fairly cheaper price than what we told you all that it might be, but it's been a lot of work to do. But, like I said, all of his guys, me and Sarah have been down there quite a bit, but we're definitely going to, we should get those out early next week.
We appreciate it. We appreciate all your work, Greg.
We're still working on that.
Come on, Chad.
We've got, we've got at least one more year to get that done, so I don't know what'll happen this year.
Here's hoping.
We're working. So, and then on the, just the, on the engraving for the welcome sign should have already been done, but the guy's doing it, he's put me off a couple of times, but he's assured me that it'll get done as soon as this weekend, this weekend. So, and then we'll be able to get a seal and landscape and move forward once we get it engraved. So, hopefully we'll see some, so that looking different and just the wrong stick now.
It still looks good, though.
Yeah.
It's progress.
Yeah, yeah. It's just been, he's had, he's canceled on me a couple of times. Some of that was due to weather, something that came up for him, but he's assured, I talked to him today, he's assured me he'll get it by this weekend. So... I'm actually not dealing with Kelly anymore. Yeah, it's a guy that's working for him. Is that going to actually do it? So, I'm not ready to call it Kelly and say, "Oh, your guy's not..." But if he doesn't do it this weekend, I'll go back to Kelly. Or I'll call you. You can call him. So, that's about all I've got. Y'all have any questions or anything?
Any questions for Chad?
Thank you guys very much, Chad.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Chief Myers?
Well, you notice we do have a new graph in the chart or in the packet there that is the special mayor, kind of tracks our yearly call. We'll try to implement that. Maybe we can do it for two years at a time and kind of track where we're at. So, you guys have heard, and I was up there with the special mayor, so if you guys can come up with something that you're not getting that we can do for you, just close them in the mail. Basically, just want to let everybody know, you should have got an email on the Christmas dinner, December the 4th, 6:30, right? 6:30? So, if not, make sure you just get a whole jam, there are not many people you're bringing. So, the last thing I've got, the green contract is up for renewal next year in January. If you guys don't have a problem with it, we're just going to keep it the same. We're running probably anywhere from half a dozen to a dozen calls a month in green one. So, things go well, but they haven't changed so much that I think we really need to go up on the contract yet. But another five years, we'll look at it again and see where we're at. So, if y'all don't have an issue, I'll get all the paperwork drawn up and just have it signed, let me use the sign, and we'll proceed with it.
Any questions for Chief? Thank you, sir. Christie?
I don't have a lot of extra from what's in the packet. The department has worked on funding pressure this time. The budget's spent for years, we jolly hoisted them, so everybody's working on that. They're going to stay with the budget. The budget's looking really good. If you have any questions about the finances, the financial package, we might answer those. And then the only other thing I have is, we have a meeting tomorrow morning with Baldwin Shell to kick off meeting for the teleports, or the city ward stealing. Once we get through that tomorrow, they should begin work right away. And as of right now, we still have a first day of the first year of the gentleman.
Cool. So, just to clarify something Christie said, she's encouraging the department heads to spend money. She's encouraging them to get money spent for this year that they're going to spend so she can get the receipts booked. Chad, we are not, we are not encouraging you to spend money. Any questions for Christie? No?
No.
Thank you, Christie. All right, so next up, our old business.
Mayor, real quick, can I ask something? Question for the Westport man?
Sure.
I forgot to mention, we're two down. Members?
Yes.
And I know everybody's here for a certain reason, just the planning commission does, is the heart of what we're trying to plan for. If there's anybody in the group here who would like to be a part of that process and learn how to do it, help us out, we need, we have seven, we have a seven-member group, and we've got five now. We have barely enough to create a forum and do what we need to do. And I can tell people are passionate about what they want to do here, I am too, why I do this. So, if you have, if you would like to be a part of the hard work, see the mayor, see Christie, get you on the agenda.
So, the way to apply to the planning commission is to go to City Hall and ask for an application for the planning commission. Once you fill that out, then we can start moving forward with that.
I do have a question. Can you, are you pulled up with people that are not in the city? Can you take someone on the way?
I think I'm, I think I'm the only one on the committee now who's not in, you have two that are in the planning area. I have one more that could be in the best, be in the planning area, not necessarily in the city. And then one is the, some questions would be out if you could.
Well, I thought that might have been...
Exactly. I did think for clarity. Exactly. Anything else? Thank you.
Sorry.
Okay. So, our old business is the conditional use permit at Stockburger. And before we get started there, I want to remind everyone, I'm going to give you your time to speak, but there's a couple of things that have already been brought up, okay? So, what I really don't want to do is rehash old items. So, we can do this a couple of ways. Items that have been brought up, traffic in the area, alcohol in the area, noise in the area, lighting concerns, property values, a large building being put on this property in your neighborhood, okay? So, everyone that has these concerns that have been addressed to the council, would you please raise your hand now? All right, so we have a fairly good group of people that are here for that, okay? What I'm getting at is, I'm asking you to come to the council with something besides that, okay? Is the council aware of those issues with the property?
Yes.
Okay. So, I want to move this forward. If you have other concerns, we're well aware of those. If you have other concerns, I encourage you to come and share those with us. But I also want to remind the residents that are here tonight how government works. We have a set of books, the city council has a set, the planning commission has a set. We have a comprehensive plan that guides our decisions. Every ordinance in these books, everything in this comprehensive plan has been put together at the request of input from the citizens of Westport, okay? So, we are bound, there's a lot of passion in the room tonight, and I get that, but we are bound to act by what we find in the code, okay? And so, I say that for both the citizens tonight and the council. We are bound to act on the code, not on our passions or our emotions. And so, I encourage the city, the citizens here, if the outcome of this is not what you like, I encourage you to use that as a motivator to engage in rewriting this code or making changes to this code because the code is here to make sure that everyone has the same opportunity, no matter what your last name is or what group you're affiliated with. That's what the code is for, and that's what the council is here to decide on. If we don't like the code, and I'm here to tell you, there's things in this code that need to be changed. Some of this stuff's been here since the 70s, okay? A lot of it needs updated. And for 11 council meetings now, I have begged both the citizens that have attended the meetings and the council to provide input on where we need to go, okay? So, I say that to you, I'm saying it again, I'm begging you to engage in this city. If I ask for a show of hands of how many are here from the Greystone subdivision, how many hands are going to go up tonight? Not very many. And my point there is, we can't only engage in our city government when it affects us. We are a city. We are, this entire city works together, okay? So, please engage in the city process, in the planning process, and in the creating and amending of ordinances. All right. So...
Mr. Mayor, would you indulge me for about 45 seconds? I want to read out of the development plan about commercial, page six.
Sure.
Highlighted some. It'll be brief, but I think it might help us in what we're about to do. A couple of highlights on page six is neighborhood commercial areas are a convenient way to meet shopping needs of adjacent residents. Activities and business hours should be managed to maintain compatibility with residential neighborhoods. The city recognizes this type of commercial use contributes to an active area where residence data needs can be met. Further down, mixed-use areas are areas where residential, commercial, office, and agricultural areas would be appropriate. The mixed-use designation will allow developers flexibility in terms of usage. And then further down the page on goals, provide accessible and convenient commercial locations while avoiding overzoning. The closing out page six talking about objectives. One of the highlighted things is protect adjoining properties from the potential adverse impacts associated with commercial uses adjacent to and within residential areas with proper mitigation measures to address scale, massing, traffic, noise appearance, lighting, drainage, and effect on property values. So, that describes trying to do two things, develop and protect owners' interests. Now, the reason I spoke up is that has been considered by people in the packs that helped compile this, and it'll be considered tonight. That's what the objectives say, and this is the guidelines I'm going by.
Anyone else in the council have anything to say? Add to that? Okay. So, is there anyone in the city that would like to address the council tonight concerning the public use or the conditional use permit on topics other than what we've already established that the council has heard? Dina, you're standing, so...
My name is Dina McKnight. I live at 1025 Stockburger. And I'm going to say a few things I said last time, just because there are a lot of people here this time that were not here last time, and some council members. here this time that were not here last time, and some council members that are here.
So, a couple of council members, let's keep that part a summary and keep it brief.
So first of all, I do want to thank y'all for listening to our input whenever you talk about this conditional use permit. And I also want to compliment Carolyn, because she has been obviously facing much opposition to her plan. And every time I've been around her, she's been gracious and kind, and I admire that. So thank you for doing that. So I did want to compliment her. And she does have a good idea. I will give her that. You know, whenever I looked at her little booklet, it has lots of pretty pictures, and I love your drawings, so I wanted to tell her that. And I don't mean that condescendingly, I really sincerely mean it. But I'm just gonna go through a few things really quickly that I think are important for us to note, and it goes exactly with what you said about following the codes and ordinances. And to me, that is the main point that we need to focus on today. So when you talk about zoning, there is a zoning map that we are supposed to follow right now in the city of Westport. And the area she's talking about is zoned for residential, and part of it is agricultural, and part of it has not been added, panics into the city as of yet that I'm aware of. But because they are zoned agricultural and residential, our municipal code talks about what agricultural and residential areas should be used for. And residential areas are intended to provide for single-family residential development. And then agricultural areas are intended to provide for agricultural activities and to preserve existing agricultural activities and protect it from commercial-type uses. So if we go by just that by itself, we shouldn't have a commercial-type use in that neighborhood if we just go by the municipal code. And also, you all have a copy, I believe, of the conditional use permit questions that you're supposed to answer. And again, Carolyn, I know you've done a lot of work in the background trying to prepare for this. But if you look at number five, the question states, is the proposed use compatible with the surrounding area and the planned use for the area? And so if you look at the surrounding area, many of you all were in our neighborhood a week and a half ago, and it's very clearly a beautiful residential area. It's house after house, where we meet our neighbors on the street whenever we're out walking and running and pushing our strollers. And so is this compatible with the area? No, there's nothing else commercial in that area. Also, the planned use, if you look at the planned use, back in 2014, the city took some time to make a map that says future land use. And on this future land use, you all may not be able to see it, but because I live there, I know exactly where it is. Stockburger is clearly highlighted in yellow. So in 2014, when they were planning for our street where this property is located, that yellow color says residential estate. So when, when our city was planning for the future, they didn't plan for any type of commercial use. They planned for the continued use of residential estate. Also, really quickly, y'all have an appendix where this outlines what residential and agricultural areas are supposed to be used for, and everywhere there's an X is something that's approved. And then there are Cs where if you want to get a conditional use permit, you can get potential approval to use it that way. And there is nothing here that says event venue, nothing that resembles it. Even a lodge, I looked up what that, the definition of what that is, that's a place where people go and stay, like a hotel or motel. That's not what this is. The other, both of the things that they were talking about don't really apply to an event venue. So if you're looking again at this city document that we're supposed to all follow, an event venue is not anything that you're supposed to grant a conditional use permit for. Furthermore, whenever you look at the city of Westport Comprehensive Development Plan that was also established in 2014, I want to read it just so I don't misquote it, then it talked about what Mr. Tover said, was that the neighborhood commercial areas are designed to benefit the residents of the neighborhood and contribute to their daily needs, that's us, that live on those streets. And that says it on page six. And what is being proposed is not necessarily for us. I mean, I know, we don't have fifteen thousand dollars to go and use that property every now and then, so that's not benefiting us. That's, even in her plan, she listed several cities that she hopes to draw from, Bentonville, Springdale, Rogers. That's not the residences, the people that live on that street. Also, whenever I thought about her event venue, I looked at some other ones in neighboring cities, and I really feel like a commercial zoned place would be better. Like in Prairie Grove recently, the Washington County Milling Company was established, and when I looked on the Washington County website, that's commercially zoned. So that event venue was appropriately placed on a commercially zoned area. She stated earlier in one of the other meetings that she wanted it to feel like it was out in the middle of nowhere. And so, I mean, I would respectfully say maybe that's where it needs to be, is out somewhere in a more remote location. For example, she's mentioned Kendrick Barn, which is in Mulberry, Arkansas. I've attended a wedding there. And when I looked on the Washington, Arkansas website and looked it up in that area, it is out of the city limits. It's not in a zoned area that's zoned for residential use. So those people chose a place that was out in the middle of nowhere for their purposes. Again, there's also a place near Elkins called the Staples on the Hill. This is another event venue. They went again out into the county, outside of city limits, to a place that wasn't zoned residential or agricultural. So I would just say that, you know, that needs to be considered when you choose a location. Another thing that, just in the last few days, I noticed on social media that there were some people that voiced that they desired growth for our town. And whenever I read, there were over a hundred comments, I don't know if you all saw that. But whenever I tried to scroll through and see some of the things that the citizens of our city wanted, just a few of them talked about they would like some apartments, because there's such a need for people to come and rent places. They wanted restaurants, more of a variety of places to go and eat. They said they wanted a small hardware store. That was something that they mentioned. They also said, and several people mentioned, that they wanted places where their children or teenagers could go and have appropriate recreation. And all of those were what the citizens of Westport stated recently that they wanted when they talked about city growth. And, you know, I would dare say that there are few to no families in the city of Westport that could afford to rent an event venue at fifteen thousand dollars an event. And so I would say that this isn't the type of growth that even the citizens of our town are requesting. That's not what they want. What I think is that we need to plan wisely for growth and development that is being asked for by the citizens of Westport so that we can generate revenue. I think everyone in this room would agree that our city does need revenue. We do need to grow. All of that is something we can come together and agree upon and work towards. But I don't think that this event venue is the way to do it. So whenever I look at you all as the governing body of Westport, first of all, I sincerely thank you. You all have to come here and listen to all of us and consider all these viewpoints. I don't even, can't even fathom how many hours you spend in the background trying to prepare for these events. And maybe all the emails you field and phone calls you get from people that are wanting to voice their opinion. So I do thank you for that. But you were elected by the citizens of this town to make decisions that support and uphold all the existing laws, ordinances, and codes that the city has already put into place. The Comprehensive Development Plan states on page sixteen, and I'll just read it because I want to quote it accurately. It says zoning can provide considerable enforcement of the comprehensive plan. It is the most common and most powerful land use regulation employed by local governments. Zoning acts as a guide for development when it designates specific areas for specific uses. Our specific area on Stockburger has been designated for the specific use of residential and agricultural purposes. And so that is in your comprehensive development plan that you are supposed to uphold. So as I've rattled through this really quickly, and I have this stack of lots of paper, I've printed off and highlighted and studied in the last month, I have referred to no less than seven legal documents that your city has developed. This is the backbone of the city's growth and development plan. This is what we're supposed to be abiding by. And I don't think these should be ignored or carelessly tossed aside just for the purpose of one person to totally change the face of our neighborhood so that they can make a profit. So I just appeal to you all to please preserve our neighborhood as the intended use that you all have designated and that we purchased our property for. We, like another person mentioned, we've invested there, and we just ask that you would please respect that and uphold that. So thank you for your, again, for your service to our town, and I also thank you for considering my inputs.
Any questions for Deanna? Anyone else I could address, council? Yes, sir. Again, Travis, please give us your name. Again, I'm gonna, I'm gonna remind everyone that comes to the podium tonight, let's please keep this moving forward, let's not address past issues, let's bring new issues to the podium.
My name is Travis Kees. I live on Butterfield, my wife and our two daughters. I'm speaking for my wife and myself, so be considerate of my time as well. I want to talk about the municipal code as well. Under the city of Westport Municipal Code fourteen oh four oh nine, conditional use criteria, it states, it clearly says, may authorize the conditional use only after all of the following criteria have been answered with a yes finding. Deanna mentioned one of them, she mentioned number five, so I won't go over that one, but I want to go over. I know two of them have been answered yes, and that's the first two. The other eight I do not think have been answered, so I don't know, I don't understand how we can vote or how it can be voted on tonight. So first one I want to talk about is number four, is fire protection adequate? It's from my understanding that she provided a set of preliminary plans and not a set of final plans. So I don't know if fire protection was actually included in that, but to this gentleman's, what he was talking about as far as water pressure goes. If she's putting in an eight thousand square foot building, it's gonna have to have fire suppression sprinklers. It's gonna have to come off of the water main, and that is going to decrease the water pressure for that area for sure. But again, I don't know if that was even presented, and it wasn't.
It was. Both our fire chief and our public works director have said we have adequate water pressure in the area.
But was her.
That is not for this council to decide. She will have to meet certain fire codes as the project goes forward. That is, that is outside the realm of this council, though.
Let me expand a bit, because I'm trying to make a living. You'll notice there's no sprinklers in this building. There's going to be, is part of the plan going forward, but depending on the building type, it may not have to be sprinkler. Not, I'm not editorializing on what you've said, but just because of square footage, it's all about the building type. But it may well have to be sprinklers, but not necessarily. That's not a foregone conclusion.
Okay, with it being an event venue, I would imagine with two hundred and fifty people that she says are gonna be in there, I would imagine that code would require four of them. My, just, just real quick, my background, for those of you who do not know, for the past ten years, I've done construction for, I was a senior construction manager for Walmart, and this prior year I've been, I worked for Walmart in the real estate acquisition and design of our buildings.
I understood, but again, as a, as a construction professional, very often we build buildings bigger than this size because of the type of structure though, they don't have to be sprinkler.
So number six, it says, is ingress egress safe and convenient? One thing that she's talked about is, she said that she has gotten easement from the neighbors for her entryway to her, to this event venue. If you create a new access onto seventy-one, you not only have to have that, you have to have DOT approvals. You have to have an easement from DOT. And if she doesn't have that prior to this getting approved, then if this gets approved, but it gets, her easement gets denied by Arkansas DOT, then the only access that she's gonna have to it is gonna be the access that she says is not gonna be used.
And Travis, the approval is tied to that access.
By Arkansas DOT?
She has to get, yes, the conditional use is tied to her getting that.
But my thing is, is I don't understand how we can vote on it, or how you guys can vote on it.
The, they can approve the use conditionally, and if the conditions aren't met, then it's as if the use wasn't approved. You can say, you can build that house if you get the financing, or you can buy that house if you get the financing. Sure, you understand that as you're in acquisition. But if you don't get the financing, it's as if the contract didn't exist, right? The contract has a contingency. And so the sprinkling of the building or the access to the road would be contingencies. And if they're not met, then the approval would be for naught. And so that's how that would work.
So then the last thing that I want to talk about, because I'll just skip over my last point there, is, so she's valued this, she's valued her business. She says it's gonna bring in six hundred thousand dollars a year for Westport. She says it's gonna be one point two to one point five million dollars to construct. So she's valued her business anywhere from six hundred thousand dollars to two point one million dollars, what it's worth. I did a search on event venues around the area, and I found three of them, and I looked for the most expensive ones. And I understand that she says it's gonna be for a whole weekend, a whole weekend. So the Castle on Stagecoach in Little Rock, it has four hundred, it has space for four hundred people, and it's a hundred acre estate. For twelve hours, it's forty-five hundred dollars. And she's saying that her events are gonna be fifteen thousand dollars per event on an unestablished business, and established business is forty-five hundred dollars. Crack Place Inn and Barn is fifty-two fifty, and it holds three hundred and fifty people. Sassafras Springs Vineyard and Winery is fifty-five hundred dollars and it holds four hundred people. And those are established businesses. So if you take an established business that makes, let's just say, I mean, six thousand dollars per event, you're gonna have an unestablished business that's most likely gonna make a fraction of that, a fraction of the six thousand dollars, where she's saying it's gonna be fifteen thousand dollars. I only bring that up to say, I love the numbers. I mean, it's great, and I think it would be a great thing for Westport, but I don't think the numbers are accurate. I think, I want development and growth just as much as anybody else, but I want the rock development and the rock growth, and I just don't think that's, this is it. So I just wanted to thank the council.
Any questions for Travis? Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. Again, I'm just gonna remind you, please keep it to something that we haven't heard.
No problem.
Okay. Tell us your name.
My name is Mike Mitchell. I live at eight thirty-two Butterfield Avenue in Westport. And I made just a few notes here, and I wanted to thank all the city council for this. I know, once again, I know we spend a lot of time, Federation, I know what they're like in part, but served on the committee, the commission before. You know, I'm, I'm pro-business. I mean, I'm a business person, and I'd love to see this business in this town. I don't have any problems, I don't have any issues with these people that they wants to do, but, and I hope she does well. But my issue is this, and is on the conditional use problem, but in a different way. And the problem that I see is there's no definition of terms that everybody, like our planning commission, has been a little, well, just tonight, they found, they reported that that goes with the property owner, is that right?
It stays with the property.
It stays with the property. So I think it causes confusion here, it causes confusion up there, and it causes confusion over here. We've got a lot of upset people, happy people, different types of folks in here that want to hear what's going on. And, you know, it's, it's taking up time. You just reported how many meetings that you've had over this, and meetings aside from public. And so in short, my solution to this, humbly, is a tactic that can be given to a person that's motivated, has the money, has the energy to start a business, that they have a clear understanding of what's ahead of them and what Westport requires of them. that they have a clear understanding of what's ahead of them, and what Westfork requires of them. I, you know, to my mind, it would be, it would be a good city to have a subcommittee to the planning commission that helps with that. Where it's when somebody comes in to see Christie, and that's generally the face of the city out there, you know, when you come in. And they have these desires, she can hand them a packet with details on explaining what conditional use is, and explain how, what rezoning is. If you have to be rezoned, that might be on pace through, and it explains what you have to go through to do that before they make those decisions. And I think it's important that we do that because it encourages other businesses. Because if other businesses have to come in here and go through all of this to settle here and benefit the city, they may just take a second look at that because it appears that we are confused, that we're back and forth on some things, and we're not settled. And you mentioned participation in the city. And I would be glad to work with a committee. Joe Ford is a dictionary in construction. He does every day. He deals with licenses, he deals with permits, he deals with certificates of occupancy. That's daily. Me, on the other hand, I'm a subcontractor. And I refer to him on things. I've done that for almost 20 years. So, I'm involved. I see where concrete is or whatever we're dealing with, and I would deal with a person such as Joe to come in and talk to this committee and help with it. And develop a packet of some sort, some sort of guidelines that affirm certain firm definitions and research on these as best we can. Then if there's a question with the business person, they could approach this meeting, this mission, before a determination, before we get the cart in front of course. And so.
So, to address that, I think that's a great idea. And so, our planning commission has been working on that. They meet once, once a month. That is something that I've asked that they begin to create because it is, it is an issue. However, business goes on, right? So, we've got, I'm not denying we need, we need updates. There's things that have kind of fell through the cracks. They are working on it. It's not finished yet, but we still have people coming in on business. So, we are experiencing, we have a young commission. We're experiencing some, some problems, but we are working to fix those.
I think additionally, with the planning commission, it would help, and this is, again, it's my humble opinion. It would encourage the person that has never dealt with anything in their local government, that wants to contribute. And it gives them some guidelines to work from, where they understand all these terms, and there are a lot of, that they can contribute and vote intelligently and note, and be able to ask questions off of this package. And possibly the same package that was developed for the new business person, for the new business coming into town. Everything from their planning maps to sprinklers, I guess.
Yeah. And so, our planning commission meets the second, third Thursday of each month at 6:30. For anyone that wants to come and provide input. We've been looking, I've been the mayor 11 months. This is my 11th council meeting, and we've been looking for planning commissioners for 11 months. So, you brought up a subcommittee. Sir, I'm going to tell you, there is no way. I can't get a committee built.
You can't get a committee.
So, and that was part of my point when I addressed you guys before we started this public comment. If, if this, if this planned venue was being put in the Grace Town subdivision, how many would be here tonight? From Stockburger, very few. And so, so our commissions, it's easy to take shots at them, but they are working. Oh, I know, I know. No, I know, I understand. I'm just saying, we can, we can place blame on them, but in the past, you know, for one reason or another, things have fell through the crack. We are trying to build that up. We're trying to build the schedule that, the exact schedule, you just said, I guarantee you, Scott and I have had that conversation. Steve and I have had that conversation. That's two of our planning commissioners that are here tonight. So, we are actively working, at the same time, we're actively working to try to build a full commission.
Right. And I just, you know, I think if, in the future, it would sure serve a purpose if new businesses trying to come into town had more than just general guidelines to work with, and I think it would encourage business. They don't feel safe whenever they, you know, have to go through this stuff sometimes. A lot of times you're dealing with a lot of money, and Joe knows that very well. He's looking to stay on his budget and stay in line with that stuff, and there's no hiccups coming up in the middle of his project.
I want to say something. I know you travel a lot, you know, part of the job sites, but you are subcontractors, and you're familiar with the process. As he said while ago, the planning commission chairman said while ago, there's a spot open for someone that's not necessarily, and the best way to do this, while we'll make a lot of mistakes up here, we're still here swinging at it. And not trying to put you on the spot, but the best way to integrate and help influence and help reinforce is to be there.
I would definitely consider that. I do travel a lot, and that's been an issue with my servant, even on the Water and Sewer Commission. You know, I'd have to be out of town, and so I'm going to miss meetings, but I'd certainly like to be involved in it.
And even if you're not on the committee, you can still say, I mean, we, we need citizen participation, whether you're on the committee or not. You're still providing input for the direction. And I assure you, that committee's just like this one. You asked me the other day, you were about halfway ready to whip me out there in that field of carrots. I want to know, am I going to get more than two minutes to speak? But that committee's just like this one. We want your input, whether you're on the committee or not, we want input.
Right, right. Well, I would certainly entertain looking at that, you know, and at least coming by and talking to them.
8:30, 6:30.
Not to put you on the spot.
Not to put you on the spot here, yeah, no, but I do appreciate everybody's, everybody up here. I truly do. I know what it is to serve, but I think that Westfork is, I've seen it in other towns, I know Joe has, where the business exploded, buildings exploded, and those towns were overflown. Northwest Arkansas is a perfect example of it. And if you don't have concrete deals, and it here to go strictly, you have problems, and you have problems every time. And you know better than me, they just compound, and they just worse and worse, and there's, and you got this, you know? And so, I'd be happy to help or at least visit.
Okay. Any questions for the council?
But I think, I think that's where that, this thing has gone. And unfortunately, it's caused a lot of problems and possibly caused you not to be able to be what she was wanting to do, where she was wanting to do. And that's another, I don't mean to take in much, just a few seconds here. That's another thing is, you know, once you convince where a person is convinced that they can do that, and then it's, well, no, you can't. You know, it sort of knocks the wind out of you. And I think if this event was successful, possibly in a different place, or possibly shown by some council members or a local realtor, or whatever, it would be a great asset to Westfork. You know, it's my feelings that, that it's not in the appropriate place. That's my feeling. But what the rules say is what goes. So, thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Can I ask that people that are speaking, speak up? Because a lot of us back here, we're sitting back of them, so we can't hear.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Would anyone else like to address the council? Yes, ma'am.
Your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Can I ask that people that are speaking, speak up? Because a lot of us back here, we're sitting back of them, so we can't hear.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Would anyone else like to address the council? Yes, ma'am. Bring her to.
I'll be nice and loud. I'm a seventh grade teacher. It's a requirement.
So, before you get started, we'll remind you the same thing. Please keep this moving forward. Let's not rehash what we've already had before.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name's Martha Sandman, and I own the property at 345 Davis Street. So, the property at 887 Stockburger is right across from my property. You go down my driveway and around that corner, and that's where I, I have five horses, so I use the property that I own, zoned as it is, partially agricultural, and also that's where I live. I just wanted to address the council again on Municipal Code 14.04.09. The question is, is the proposed use compatible with the area? And I would say, no, it is not compatible with the area as one who lives directly across from it, knowing how we use that property in the area and how it is zoned. And with all due respect, I absolutely respect people having dreams and wanting to build and create new opportunities. The reason that I moved to Westfork was because that's what I wanted for myself and my mother and my niece. That's why we moved here. I'm not only a teacher, but I've been a real estate agent, a licensed Realtor in the past, and I invested in Westfork because of that neighborhood, the way it was zoned, the people I live around, and the lifestyle that we lead. And unfortunately, while this is a beautiful concept, and it's a beautifully designed business plan, it does not fit per municipal code within the proposed use. It's not compatible with the area.
And we've heard that. Do you have a specific reason, other than what we've heard, why it doesn't fit?
Why it doesn't fit with the area where I live?
Yeah, I mean, other than, because this, Section 5 has been brought up. So, I'm asking, is there, is there another reason why, that we haven't heard why, as to why it doesn't fit?
And I apologize when I heard absolutely everything you were saying about being involved in city government. This is as involved as I can be with working six days a week with, with seventh graders. I don't know if we've talked about decreased safety for children in the area. I don't know if that's been covered, and I apologize if I'm bringing that up. I don't know if we've talked about the types, the nature of, of events that occur when we have large events in residential neighborhoods, like the criminal activities that have gone on at, at events such as bike pools and barbecue. And I used to live on South Greg Avenue, which is only a couple blocks from Dixon, and so I know what it's like to live in an area when events like those are growing and traffic like that is increasing. And I also know from being in real estate and living around that area back in the early 2000s, what happens when a venue doesn't succeed, and what happens when there are buildings that are left behind. And so, I'm concerned not only about conserving what we currently have planned for in our neighborhood, but also what could possibly happen in terms of long-term compatibility, having potentially a property that would stand vacant if it were not successful. And doing a cursory, doing a cursory bit of research into some comparable properties for rent, the proposed, the proposed rental fee is not only high, but also there are several different locations in our area that could really benefit from reinvention and revitalization that, that would be so much more, more appropriate and compatible than this particular one.
Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir. Tell us your name, and I'm going to remind you.
My name is Joey Rodman. I live on Stone Metal Lane.
Okay, I'm going to remind you, Joey, before we get started.
All I want to say here is I'm here to show support for my neighbors, for the residents here, for me and my wife, though.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, sir. Tell us your name, sir.
Sean Rochelle, 1090 Stockburger.
Sean, I'm going to remind you, the same thing. Please keep it moving forward. We've already hashed a lot of things, and I appreciate those, but I want new, new content, okay?
I got you. I heard you speak earlier about not making emotional decisions, and I completely get that, respect everybody on there. I know a couple of you. I don't know many of you. I grew up in Elkins and St. Paul. I left for a long time, Southern California. The reason I'm telling you this, I'm going to put it in context. Texas, Indianapolis, South Carolina, 11 and a half years ago, I moved back when my mom got pregnant in Southern California. We came back to raise a family. I lived two months with my mother in Elkins. I went to Prairie Grove, Farmington, all around here. Let me tell you, it wasn't the same place when I left. In a lot of ways, it excited me because the economic, it was thriving, it was a different social dynamic. There were more cultural opportunities, more opportunities for my children. But in the end, I moved back here for one reason. One of my children experienced something like I had, and of all the places I drove, of all the time I spent researching, this town, Westfork, and let me tell you, as an elk, I would have never thought I'd been a tiger. But the truth is this, we love this town. My daughter came home from the hospital to 1090 Stockburger. I have an 11-year-old, a 10-year-old, and a 6-year-old. We love Riverside Park. We love our neighbors. We love our community. And while I recognize you have to have growth, you have to have sustainable, sustainable growth, sustainable growth to thrive and grow forward. I believe in that. I just don't want to become Elkins. I don't want to become Farmington. I don't want to become those other places. You guys are special, and now I, we're special. My children only know Westfork, so I'm not giving you facts and figures. I've got, they've been said, I looked on the internet, I know how many comparable venues there are. I know what the price points are. My CEO owns Horton Farms. We have two farms out by Hazel Valley Ranch. I know how many there are and what they are. And I would just encourage you, when the bubble popped in housing, just be careful that when we approve something, we're not overextending ourselves in an area that already is being stretched, and there are other places that will not survive. So, it was an emotional plea. Thanks for your time. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? We're going to draw this to a close quickly. Take a vote on it. Yes, ma'am. Stay, stay up here. Go ahead and stay up here. All right, so state your name. I'm going to remind you the same thing. Let's keep this something, something we haven't heard already.
My name's Michelle Wickler, and I'm coming here to speak in support of this. I do not live there, so, but I have lived in places where I've been challenged too, and ended up with something in the backyard of mine, but I survived. And it was, and it didn't lose property value. So, I just want to say that I think it is a good thing for us to have a respectable woman, have a good business here, to support the City of Westfork. And I, I will repeat what you said.
Oh, boy.
Most of the people, half the people on this council have been appointed because nobody else ran against them. And I have come to several council meetings over the 10 years I've been here, not at 20 or 25 I've been here, and I don't see a lot of these faces here. So, I would just support what you had to say, that we all need to come involved, and we can't just come when it's something that belongs to you personally. It needs to be the whole community, which will benefit from this kind of thing.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Tell us your name.
I am Betty Reynolds. I live on Butterfield.
Hey, Betty, I'm going to remind you, like I reminded everyone else, let's keep this something new.
Out of eight points, I've got three.
Okay.
I'm not a big one with numbers, but I have been on the internet doing some searching, and I thought this was a really neat idea whenever I first heard of it. But against it, yes. There are 43 very well documented wedding or entertainment venues on the internet within two hours of Westfork. So, as far as something special, that kind of shot that down for me. A case in point, when I was in real estate, I sold a property on Old Wyre, about $270,000, to a young couple. The deal went through, and the week after, I found out that they were trying to rezone it commercially for daycare. commercially, for a daycare. The sellers, who were my sellers, did not know this was gonna happen. The young couple had gone around and done like Ms. Carolyn's done, and visited with the neighbors, got things signed off. They went ahead and moved to West Thompson, I, and that property became a daycare, a really good one, really nice. The sellers stayed in contact with me, and within a year, informed me that three of the neighbors had moved. Because the promises that had been made by the daycare developers couldn't be kept, they couldn't just have 10 kids at a time out back. The noise was overwhelming for the older folks, and the not-so-old folks, in their backyards trying to enjoy their properties, shot their values, many people at. At this point, folks, I know of seven, us included, who, should something go in and it created hassle, would leave, would try to sell, would attempt selling. The day that we met on the property, I had no idea the beauty of that field, behind that old house up there. It is wonderful. As I stood there, I envisioned, however, five or six residential homes back there. What a addition that would be to that neighborhood up there. As everyone continued to talk, we had parked in Mr. and Ms. Dowmets' driveway, asked permission to park over there. While everyone was still visiting out in the middle of that field, we walked, my husband and I, over to the Dowmets' driveway. No one was yelling, there were no extra loud voices, but standing in those precious people's driveway, I could hear everything that was being said, every word clearly. There was a slight breeze, granted, coming from that direction, but not a wind, nothing that, that would create something out of the ordinary. Ms. Carolyn said that, and this really stuck with me, as her clients enter that property that she's dreamed of, and drive up and they see this facade of the venue that she's proposing, and all the trees surrounding it, they're gonna feel like they're the only people in the world. Fact of the matter is, they're not. There's a lot of neighborhood families there, that that would be affected. That's all I have to say, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's no more young ladies than trying to speak. Come on up here, young man.
My name is Selma.
I walk dogs and ride horses.
And last week, the school bus came around the corner, and I think Mr. Mitchell, this may be Mr. Mitchell's dad, and my daughter ended up in a ditch in her car, and we're really concerned about the safety issues.
Okay, and we discussed the road issues, and that is a condition applied to, to the permit?
I lived on Greg Avenue too, for a while, and people from out of town and people that are not in the neighborhood, they don't care. They speed through, I mean, I guess we could put in speed bumps or something, but it was a mess.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Selma.
Alright, so we're gonna go ahead and wind this down, is there anyone else that just has to speak, that has something new to contribute? Okay. Carolyn, would you like to, a chance?
Yes, I think Ms. Barbara wants to speak.
Okay.
I am, I'm Barbara Lindsey. I live at 930 Stockburger Avenue, so I am enabled of this, but I'm also speaking, of course, as the owner of the property, and the last resident. And I'm not gonna bring up, I have a whole little paper that I typed up, that I think we've repeated too many things. I just have to go on record as saying that I love this piece of property. I fell in love with it 33 years ago, and I've lived on this street for 33 years, and I intend to continue to live on it as long as I'm able. I guess I am for this project, because I do love the property, and because when I put it up for sale, I wanted to find that buyer that fell in love with it like I did, 33 years ago. And I found that in Carolyn. The only one that I have found that has fallen in love with it. There have been people that were developers that looked at it, the lady mentioned having five or six houses. My dream is that somebody gets it that keeps the integrity of the land, of the property, of the old house, the house that generates from the 1880s. She intends to do that. That to me is important. I think she will retain the integrity of the property, I think she will respect that property, and I think she will respect the neighborhood. It is her neighborhood too. So there are at least two of us in that neighborhood that are for this project. And I just couldn't sit here very much longer and not be able to say that. I also want to just say that when I looked up the definition of a conditional use permit, one of the major things that's been over and over in many things that it talked about, was that the reason you have a conditional use permit is so that it gives the city a flexibility to put some things into a land use that don't fit the zone. Mostly, they refer to churches, educational, and small commercial businesses. So I do think that this is a possibility for this particular venture. An event center is not like, to me, is not like a regular commercial business. It's not a day-in, day-out traffic. You don't have people coming in and out all day long. You, it's not open to the general public. You don't have strangers coming in and out all day long. It's not selling a specific product, so it's not quite a commercial business, like a lot of us think of when we hear, commercial business. So again, I think that's why it sort of fits the idea of a conditional use permit. And I think that's about all I have to say, except that I really think Carolyn has the energy and the faith and the positiveness to make this a pleasant experience for all concerned.
Thank you. Carolyn, you gonna give us the last word, and then we're gonna, we're gonna put this to bed and vote on it.
You're bigger than me, I sit down.
You're about to run out of time.
A pleasant experience for all concerned.
Thank you. Carolyn, you gonna give us the last word, and then we're gonna, we're gonna put this to bed and vote on it.
You're bigger than me, I sit down.
You're about to run out of time, so let's make it quick, and let's make it something new. Tell us what your name is.
Yes sir, my name is Joe Wingate, and I'm also the man that was gonna give her a easement across, that's the reason I wanted to make sure everybody see me face-to-face. I wouldn't do this if I didn't think Carolyn was the person that owned this property. My granddad was born in, she's talking about mine, is special to me. And I hope she succeeds, and I don't got a lot to say, but the reason they have these conditional permits is, I know all these guys, it turns out, can give me all these rules, they've read all this stuff, I haven't. However, I can remember back when someone else had to get a permit to change it, before they put a house on their land. So anyhow, that's all I have to say, I do think that, I would not even consider it if it had been by besides Carolyn, because I sincerely believe it's, you know, in her heart to do the right thing. So anyhow, I'll let you go on your vote.
Thanks, sir.
Well, I have a big mouth, but I will use the microphone. We start by saying, if nothing else, I think it has opened the eyes of everybody in this community, first of all, what a tough job you guys have, second of all, how we need to get off our duffs. Me too. And get in here and get involved, because it does matter. Everyone here that has spoken is passionate. I see that, I hear it. I'm gonna make this as quick as I can, because we've heard it all. I'm gonna start with opinions, and then I'm going to give facts. Opinion, my first opinion, change is hard. Good change is hard. When hearts came in, was coming in, I was mad, because I liked superfoods. I remember walking down to superfoods, it was hard. It is good. And before superfoods left, it was good for us on the economy, so I went down there because gas was cheaper and food was cheaper. That was a good thing, but change is always hard, good or bad, especially when we are unlearned about what's actually getting ready to take place. I think that's a huge issue. I love the people that have enough passion about this council to get on, online and look at the code. I did that, too. And one of the things that I found, that I brought up yesterday, my understanding, I am a novice when it comes to city government, I promise you, I won't be going forward. I won't be going forward, that is a promise. My husband's probably going, oh, something else for her to do, but I promise you, I won't be going forward. Yes, he is, he didn't know that till this moment. But, what I do understand is that the city council code and the planning commission code should complement each other, correct? That's the way it works. It needs work, we need to, we need to make our actions talk louder than our words here tonight. But that's the gist of it. In 2014, event venues weren't, they really weren't a word, when it came to weddings and stuff. However, it is approved residential in West Fork, for us to have a private club on a residential property. That's in the planning commission code, correct? That's on the list that Deena brought up. And I do not have alms with anybody, I get along with everybody, and I know that when this is over, right or wrong, we are going to get along. We stop her on the road, we say hi to her, blah blah blah. But, I don't think a private club would benefit my neighborhood. And that's already approved on the planning commission code. I lived there, I lived there. I am, I'm a businesswoman. I am a banker, I don't like it, but I am a banker. I would never do one thing to hurt my property value, I'm gonna be real selfish for a moment, I wouldn't. A lodge is approved on residential property. I have a lodge there, it's called that beautiful home that was built in 1887, that will have full-time, 24/7 caretakers there, that I'm letting live free, because I wanna make sure I have the right people, and they couldn't afford rent. I have a lodge there, it's going to be called a B&amp;B, but I won't make money off of that, because that B&amp;B is for my clients. Okay? Change is hard. Unlearned change is even harder. I have been told that there have been things that have been said, I didn't hear it, so I can't speak to it, but I'm going to give you some facts now, and I will make this really quick. Fact, I've been in West Fork 40-plus years. I'm only 51, but I've been here a long time. I am a youth leader at the Pentecostal Church. If you don't know that we're staunch, we are. My pastor's right here, he's a good man. I am the secretary at the Pentecostal Church. I am the youth leader, first and foremost. Kids are my passion. That's a fact. Fact, this will not be a Dixon Street Bar, this will not be a whatever. This will not be an event venue like the AMP, this will not be an event venue like something I heard was going on Greenland, and people were concerned to death that I was going to have concerts with liquor. I don't do that. The fact is, this is a high-end event venue, geared towards weddings, corporate events, political events. I could go on and on, we've been there. I choose who my clients are, this is not open to the public. And if you do know me, you know I have no issue standing up, and if you don't know me, you should know I have no issue standing up, because I'm still here today. Not to do anything but to say, I know the code, I've had to learn it. I read state and federal code for 20-plus years, I read the code, I even contacted people, and said, now wait a minute, the code says we can have a private club there. It also says it has to be beneficial to the neighbors, and I know there is not one neighbor out there, that is the most affluent neighborhood in West Fork. And I am privileged enough to live there, so I know that they wouldn't benefit from that club. I also know that in the city limits, and in residential, there is an animal ordinance. We are in the city limits, and I also know that you're not supposed to have cows in the city limits, I know that, but there's always exceptions to every rule, when it matters, when it's beneficial. I don't agree with the code, because I don't want a club out there. I don't want a club. I want something that's going to benefit me and my neighbors, who are my friends, at least I still hope they are, but they are. I wanna benefit them. Fact, anyone, anything, anyplace, you either progress or you regress. Nothing ever stays the same, scientific studies have proven that. In relationships, in communities, we will either progress or we will regress. Period. This event venue, which I will speak to the finances later, because I have facts on that, this event venue, I told them, I told someone that they, I feel danged if I do and danged if I don't, if I say this, because I know what's going to be said, but I'm going to say it. We've already covered no traffic on Stockburger. This venue, event venue will be gated from Highway 71. Now, I know that I'm going to hear, if it's not, if it's gated, then people are gonna come out, Stockburger, but if it's not gated, there are gonna be sex, drugs, and rock and roll there, and that's not the case, on either one. There will, no one will even know Stockburger exists when I market this. I don't want it to come off Stockburger, that was such a valid concern, and I'm so glad that the Dowmets and Deena brought that up, because I really didn't think about it. But it is valid. Fact, out of the five people that I went and spoke to, one-on-one about this, that lived there and adjoined the property, four of them signed the paper, and four of them agreed that they wanted the prop, this event venue there, they agreed to the event venue, I got to talk to them one-on-one. The only people that didn't were the Dowmets. They didn't sign for or against, you could sign either way on this. So I followed all the ordinance rules that we have. We will regress here in West Fork, if we don't progress, that's fact. Now, I'm getting ready to give the council something, I made sure this was within the rules and the laws. These pieces of information, I'm gonna run through them really quick, because I'm ready to do this. These come from the director of the Small Business Development Technology Center in Fayetteville at the University of Arkansas. I wanted to know if I was hurting myself. I did, I wanted to know if my venue, if my property value was gonna go down, if there was a venue there, et cetera. He has access to stuff that none of us have here, because he works with the people in Little Rock. He pulled information for me. So I'm going to give you these facts, I'm gonna run through them real quick, they're numbered, to make it really easy, I'll say number one, number two, okay? So they'll just pass them down. I'm gonna talk about another fact, till this, before this gets to you guys. Man, I messed up. Fact, hindsight is 20/20. Thought about this a lot. I saw something the other day, and a man in Wisconsin had an event venue, and he made the mistake of not going and talking to his neighbors to explain himself what was going on. He let other concerned constituents in the area make those explanations. And if you've ever played the game, where you put something, say something, and then goes the next person, next person, it got blew up proportion, and he was called the most hated man in that town. I prayed about this. I am not up here to be the most hated, white-headed woman in West Fork. I don't wanna be, but, I might be, but I don't wanna be. I should have went and talked to Mr. Keller, I didn't have to, I didn't, I've never done this. I followed the ordinance, I talked to or sent certified letters to every person that had joined my property. I talked to or sent certified letters to every person that had joined my property. Man, I wish I could go back and go talk to Mr. Keller, go talk to Mr. Seagrave, go talk to the people at Stone Meadow. Go talk to them because they'd hear it from the horse's mouth, not from other people who just are passionate and are really concerned about what's coming. People aren't coming on Stockburger. People aren't going to be walking on Stockburger. I wish I had done that. It's a fact you should do that in the future if anyone does this, but I didn't. And I apologize for that to the council and to my neighbors. That's a fact. So let's move on, down to business, no crying. There's a lot of traffic that goes through West Fork. You'll look at number one and number two. On a daily basis, this did not come from me. I couldn't find this if I wanted to. I got it from the director who got it from his team in Little Rock. Number one shows are 5,700 cars that drive on West Fork or drive on Highway 71 every day. 5% of those are semi trucks. Everything else are people. Number two, this one blew my mind. I asked my husband because he works at Mulberry. 81,000 people drive up and down 49 every day. 81,000 cars. Mm-hmm. Every day. Every day. 81,000 every day drive up and down. Wow, that's a lot. Fact, home values can go down. My neighbors are right. Home values can go down. There are statistics from Little Rock that were pulled that confirm what these items are. When I spoke to this gentleman, and he's helped me tremendously, he couldn't come tonight. I told some of the aldermen he was going to be here or send an email, but because the Small Business Development and Technology Center is government-funded, he can't. Okay? He comes to West Fork. He loves West Fork. But he can't, so I won't talk for him. I'm going to show you, these came from this gentleman. Number one, the number one thing that will destroy property values in town, you don't have to live by me. Number one, bad schools. When your schools go downhill, that's the number one. This is from him, and I'm just gonna throw this for you all to see. Number two, high renter concentration. Ms. Barbara, and I hope you don't mind me saying this, she has this pre-survey to go off in three parcels. We can do houses out there. There can be rent houses out there. My property goes down. I don't want that. So I'm gonna pass this. I didn't write this. I wrote, I highlighted everything in green to make it easy for you guys. The number one reason, by far, bad schools. I grew up going to West Fork School. I was devastated when my daughter pulled her son out of school this year. Out of that school. He is a third grader. He did very poorly last year. She said, Mom, something's wrong. And I looked it up. I got this information, I did get this on the internet, so you can find it, too. In 2010, West Fork schools were number 246 of 480 in Arkansas districts. All the Arkansas districts, we were number 246 in 2010. Seven years later, we are number 326 of 484 schools. We have dropped 80 places in seven years. Something's wrong. I'm glad there are teachers here. They can probably test it. Dina's a counselor. Something's wrong. I don't want to hurt our town. I want to help our town. I spoke to the gentleman who's helped me. He had to help me write my financial projection analysis. He said, you don't have enough money in here for your salary. This is huge. You don't have enough money in here for your salary, and you don't have enough money in here for your business. Now, this is fact for me. And I said this to him, and I mean it, and actions speak louder than words, but I mean it. I said, oh, I have enough money in there. The rest of that money? The rest of that money? Our church up there floods every time there's a big rain. I hate it. We have to mop it up and flood. It floods. I'm gonna help my church. I'm not gonna tear, we're not gonna tear the building down, I don't think, I don't hope, but we're gonna make it better. My pastor, who is a hard-working man like Heath and others that have to work, they should be pillars of our community. They should be able to go out here, listen, we got enough churches in this town. It ain't working, people. I'm a youth leader. I get razors, and I get shark's teeth, and I get all this stuff, and I get kids who come in and tell me they're miserable. We need our pastors out running the streets, with all due respect, and doing what they need to do. He will be able to with this. I mean that with everything in me, with my ties and my offerings. My pastor will no longer be working a job. That's a fact. If you look at the next three pages, I really appreciate everyone putting the due diligence in and our neighbors of looking at the financial side of this for me. I can assure you, I've done it. I have, a lot.
Carolyn, I don't understand, Robby, would you clarify something, when you say your pastor is gonna build purpose, could you, I don't understand.
Sure, let me step back. I'm trying to hurry, sorry, Joe. So right now, my pastor, there's nothing wrong with working. I work a lot. My pastor works at a construction company. He doesn't have a lot of time to go out here in the community, being able to be supported by his church to go out in the community and go talk to these kids. He loves kids. He walks on stilts for them. It's the craziest thing ever. He does this kind of stuff at our church because he loves kids, and he loves people in our town. But he can't get out there and witness to them and reach them because he's got a full-time job. Our pastors, man, if there are churches in the area that your pastors don't have to work, that's awesome. Because that's what we need. We need our pastors out here going to these schools and talking to them and being cool like Brian Bowerman used to do. I don't know if he does that anymore.
Specifically tie it back to what you're doing.
So what I want to do, thank you, Joe, so the money I make isn't about me just making money. It's about improving our community. Remember, it's approved out there to have a private club. Where it sits, and all of the council members, Anita lives out there, and Joe hasn't had an opportunity to come and talk to me one-on-one, but you know where it's going to sit, okay? Here's the bottom line to this. If you look through this, this came from Little Rock. Number four, in Arkansas, the average wedding is $18,596 to have. Number five, in Fayetteville, the average wedding costs $22,928 as of 2017. To speak to, and I'm sorry, not disrespectful, but I don't remember her name, but this isn't special. It actually is because it will be a full-service event venue. I probably should have made my price a little higher, but I can still do that because it's not public. But I will do everything. I'm not selling the building. I'm selling memories. This will go. I'm not stupid enough to put $1.5 million into this town and not believe it and not believe that's going to go. I live there. I live there. I do, and I know what it is, and I understand. But the code says I can have a private club and a lodge out there and there's no issues. There's always reason for exception, and there's always room for exception. And Barbara, thank you. I didn't know that about the conditional use permit. However, I want you all to understand, the last thing I'm gonna talk about is the financial side because it does matter to us. I don't care if we have alcohol license. I think it was, I thought it was cute the first time I came to town when I was little and became an adult and found out we didn't have restaurants with liquor here because the churches have bought it up. Great, whatever. I don't need that. I don't, I'm not going to get out here and do what others have said about bringing Dixon Street to West Fork. That's not what this is about. This venue won't even be seen from the road. It is going to be in the woods. I am going to plant more vegetation, but financially, Fayetteville, I have all these documents. South Fayetteville, they're spending $21,000. The only other full-service event venue in northwest Arkansas anywhere, the closest one's Little Rock down southeast. The other one is in Bentonville, and they're not as full service as I intend to be. This will bring jobs to West Fork. I'm not gonna stand up here in line and tell you how many. I don't know. My passion's kids. I don't need to ask the teachers who's the best. I like to work with the ones that aren't the best to help them understand. Listen, I had a hard life as a kid. You choose to be a victim or you choose to be a victor. I chose to be a victor. Anybody in here that knows my childhood knows, I chose to be a victor. I love this town. Harps is my, Stephanie at Harps, she doesn't do your cakes, have her do them. She does all of my cakes. She's amazing. Harps will be the only one that does the cakes. I've talked to Chihuahuas. I've talked to Pirate's Cove. I've talked to Jakes about rehearsal dinners and all of these things. I can't give you firm numbers. I talked to one of the aldermen yesterday when they came out and looked at the property. I found my lights. I don't like AEP lights, so Scott, I won't have to have my flip switch on them. That's not what this venue is about. I'm going to use the exact same lights Fayetteville has. If you've seen their walking trails, I will use those lights. I talked to the Economic Development Director at the city of Fayetteville. She's getting me that information. I love them. They're gorgeous. Change is always hard. I don't want to hurt anyone in this town. The fact is, this will work. You won't have a stagnant gorgeous building sitting there. It won't even look like a metal building on the front and one-third of the sides. I haven't listened to everyone, and I truly mean this. This is not, I don't say stuff I don't mean. I am truly sorry that I didn't know enough about business to come and talk to each of my neighbors on Butterfield, Davis, all the way down. I will tell you, I will tell you, there was someone who's very dear to me that lives down Butterfield. He was misinformed about what this was going to be, and he'd already emailed the city council. He wasn't coming tonight because he couldn't be here. But he apologized because he was told incorrectly. I don't fault anyone. It's that I tell you, you tell me. My uncle is in, who lives right behind the Downments, who will be affected most because it's right there. My uncle is in northwest Missouri hunting. He wasn't gonna stay, but he was going to video or, we've got an app where you can audiotape a conversation. He was going to do that. Listen, we've heard enough. I have his signature as well as three others that adjoined the property. These people are going to pay $15,000 because they're not doing any of the work. They pay 19 and 20 now, and they do it all. If you follow the code, it says you can have a private club there. Please don't ever put that there regardless.
That is not in the realm of possibility. You keep citing the code, but when you go back to this, it refers to it in the development.
You're right, Joe.
You've got to fit the neighborhood. That is a, I would consider a straw man argument.
But you're right, you're right. But, well, we talked about the code being broken. The planning commission has this, and so does the city council, and they're not matching if that's the case. That's what I'm saying, based on what we have now, we actually, people, we've gotta help them fix this. It's not your fault, it's ours. So there are facts and there are opinions. Guys, I apologize to them. This has been crazy. I am so sorry. If I hadn't realized this was going to be an issue, I would have went out and talked to people. I didn't think it would be because truly is a great opportunity for us. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Carolyn. Any other questions for Carolyn before she sits down? Thank you, Carolyn. All right, council, we've heard a lot of debate. We've heard a lot of pros, a lot of cons. At the end of the day, this is our third meeting, second council meeting on this, and it is our duty to either approve or not approve this conditional use permit, not only for the sake of the council, but for the sake of Carolyn because she needs, she needs a definite answer on this, one way or the other. So without further ado.
Can I say something?
Yes, ma'am.
My name, I'm Anita Lowry, and I live on 480 Elkins. And I have, I'm a city council person, and I have the most wins of anyone on the city council about this decision because I've lived so close to its proposed venue. I have tried to keep the emotion out of this. I have researched the rules. I have called real estate agents. I have called people that I know are in construction to ask. And I didn't go to the Sunday meeting that was called because this is very emotional, and I put this in emails. Anyone who's emailed me or called me, I have tried to be very honest and objective and sincere and because it's very emotional. You're talking about people's homes. They're not the structures, they're homes. So this is a very emotional issue, and I understand that. So that's why I've tried to distance myself from the emotion of it because I've got to make a decision and I want to play by the rules. And I've researched so much that it's crazy and it's mind-boggling and it makes your eyes cross to read some of this crap and this stuff. I don't know better words. But I can tell you one thing, I hear where Carolyn's coming from when this came up with the planning commission, and I'm not blaming the planning commission because you guys are learning as you go. I've been here six years, and I still run every meeting we have, and I will from the get-go. But I'm not doing this again after my term. All you people on my board, I want to see some people running for seat. So what I'm getting at is the word it says, she, one of the things it says to, African has to provide proof that each adjacent property owner has been notified. When you hear the word adjacent, what do you think? What comes to mind? Look it up in the dictionary. It doesn't mean adjoining. It also can mean nearby or close proximity. So I hear what she's saying. I didn't know anything about this. I was getting phone calls, and I want city council. And they were, I was like, I got the same email you got. I don't know anything about what you're talking about. And it said bed and breakfast, and then when I go to the planning community, it's a venue, which venues are new, and I understand that. But the list of conditional use, we vote on that. We choose whether that's appropriate or not. And so I've been trying to focus on rules and regulations, and I was so glad to see this packet that I got today from Christie. So that's what I've tried to be objective. And so when I vote tonight, I don't, I just feel like I have a wonderful neighborhood. It's beautiful. I've brought, Barbara is a wonderful, I've been there 20 years, and her property is absolutely beautiful. I've walked up there multiple times on my own and sat there and thought, it's so beautiful and peaceful here. I don't want to see some things come in there, but I have tried. I want everyone to know. I want Carolyn to know. I want my neighbors to know. I've tried to do this objectively and play by the rules. And I can only interpret how I, when I read this, how I interpret it. And some people may interpret it a little bit different. Ask a lawyer. A lawyer reads something, every one of them's gonna interpret it different. I feel like some of the criteria on a conditional use permit wasn't met from the get-go, and I think it was hard on Carolyn. It's been hard on me, and it's not the planning commission's fault. You're learning. But I just feel like it didn't meet number four, it didn't meet five, and I feel like seven is questionable. And I'm not blaming the planning commission. I'm seriously, we all work together. And she is right. We aren't in the same page. That's where all this confusion and all this emotion is coming from. And it's been hard. I've never gotten this many emails in all these six years I've been on city council or calls, or people come into my house calling me in my pajamas. But it was 1:00 in my defense. Not in the morning and asking. But that's why I, you know, I am guilty of not being active, and this is great. I think Heath has a point. This, it is worth if it's in your backyard, and we do need to go to have growth in West Fork. And I've tried to, that's one of the things I put in my email. I know we need growth in West Fork. I know that revenue is crucial in our, but there are so many issues that are crucial. One of them is housing. We have no housing down here, whether it's rental or whatever. So we could get on that, and it could be all emotional or whatever, but I'm gonna interpret my vote tonight by being objective and how I read these rules. So, I do have, I just wanted people to know, because I do live right across from where this venue will be. And I, I don't wanna make anybody upset or, it's how I vote, so.
And Anita, I would just point out, we do have an attorney. We do have him settle with us for a reason. So if you have questions, you can ask those of the attorney.
Well, I have an attorney that calls.
Okay, okay.
It's hard for pity.
We're gonna, we're gonna pay him whether we use him or not. I'm sure all you people that got was worth every penny that you paid. All right, is, is there any other discussion among the council? Hearing that, I would entertain a motion, uh, as it relates to the conditional use permit.
Make a motion, we vote on this conditional use permit tonight.
Is that a motion to pass or? Well, we are gonna, we are gonna vote. We just need a motion of how to proceed with that vote.
I make a motion to not pass the conditional use permit. As I said last month, I would be disinclined to vote for it. I've kept an open mind. But part of the responsibility of government is listening to the majority of people. It's not to quash dreams, but it's to listen to the majority. It is a democracy.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
If a motion is second, to deny the conditional use permit. We're gonna take a roll call vote on this. Misty Cottle?
Against. To ignore the venue.
You, okay. Yes, it's a, yes, it's to deny the venue. No, it's to permit the venue. So your vote is no, right? You, you want the venue.
I want the venue.
Okay. Anita?
I'm, it's yes, I want to know.
Jeff?
No.
Jan?
No.
John Collins?
Yes.
Kira Hungate?
Yes.
Don Rollins?
No.
Joe Teller?
Yes.
And I lost count, Christie.
Don lost it.
It's four-four.
John was yes.
Kira?
Yes.
Yes. The motion fails.
It was five or three.
So it's four to four. I think it falls to the mayor to cast a deciding vote. Is that correct?
You don't have to, but you may.
And so, the city attorney has just, uh, informed me that in this case, I do not have to vote and it will fail. Um, I feel like, uh, as the mayor in this case, uh, that's my position. I need to take a vote. And I've discussed, uh, my vote with Carolyn. Um, I've, I've carefully looked through our rules and regulations. And I think it's clear that as they're currently, currently laid out, it does not prohibit us to vote for this venue. It clearly states that a conditional use permit is granted to a maximum of one thousand square feet of floor space. We, it also clearly states that this is a large-scale development in terms of our developments within the city. I do not think a large-scale commercial development, as, as this would wind up being, um, is conducive to the area. And Carolyn, you know, I've talked to you several times and you know that I'm for this, I want it. Um, I just, um, with, with the, the conditions and the rules we have in place, I do, I cannot vote for it. And so for that, I'm sorry because like I said, I know your dream and I love your vision. So, uh, my vote is yes.
And Carolyn, I do wanna say that I know that when you say something, you mean it. And I know that you are compassionate. And I, I just didn't wanna get, it's been very emotional for me too. Because I wanna do what's right for West Ford. But I, it, it's, it was hard and I just tried to base it on the rules and what I read and how I interpreted it. Thanks for that.
Nobody's reimbursed in the plan.
We do need to work on this, as the planning commission in the city council.
So, uh, this motion is passed, the, the conditional use is denied. The attorney just mentioned something that, that reminded me of something. Part of this body, uh, the Planning Commission is to protect property rights. And, and I think that it's fair to say that everyone that came out against this project felt like their property rights were being attacked. I want to, I wanna cause you to think of something. Ms. Barbara has property rights. She's the current owner of this property. Carolyn has property rights as a potential buyer. So it's not just protecting one side of property rights. Uh, there's been a, a for-sale sign on that property for how long, Barbara? So for several months. We've all had an opportunity to buy that. So I, when we, because that's been brought up before, our property rights need to be protected. This, the job of this council is also to protect the property rights of the potential buyer and the seller. Just wanted to pass that along as something else to thank them tonight. So, we're gonna move along into new business. Yes, uh, we'll go ahead and take a break. If you'd like to leave, if you'd like to use the restroom like the mayor, uh, you're free to do so. We'll convene in five minutes. All right, guys, we're gonna go ahead and reconvene. Our first item. Our first item of new business is ordinance four sixty-seven, the Lindsay property annexation. Yes, ma'am?
I think I, um, from further consideration, would like to table that motion.
Okay. Is there any discussion on the council? A motion?
I'll make the motion table.
Motion second to table annexation. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Thank you, Barbara. Uh, next item of new business is the approval for the police department to go over budget on a training line item. This is the line item we spoke at, at our budget meeting two weeks ago. I would entertain a motion to move forward on this.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion in second. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Resolution two thousand seventeen dash oh eight to approve the two thousand eighteen budget that we had a special meeting to go over two weeks ago. Is there any discussion on our budget? Yes, ma'am?
I just wanna point out two things, because there were, uh, two changes. The lottery changes, uh, were made, uh, based on the discussion that we had at the meeting. And then we increased, uh, the computer consultant line on the general phones and decreased the capital outlay just a little bit to allow us some, um, money to do some updates on office, uh, outlook and all that kinda stuff.
So on our, on our software, it's still computer-related?
It's the only changes that were made since our budget meeting.
That still fall within the?
Yes. Didn't change any bottom lines, just moved some money around.
I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the budget.
Oh, second?
Motion in second. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Resolution number two seven, two zero one seven dash oh nine, zero nine, authorizing the destruction of records. Christie, you wanna speak to this? We have it in our packet. What we're looking at doing is freeing up some space, file cabinet space as we move to our new building. As you can see on your list there, um, we've got some, some old receipts and stuff. Some of that date back to the seventies. Uh, some of it's a little bit more recent. All of it has been captured within an audit. So the, the records, the records have been captured. We are looking to get rid of some of the supporting data for those records. Any concerns or questions about this?
It's all been out of due, right?
Yes, ma'am. I would entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Motion in second. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, say no.
No.
Did you catch that, Christie? One no?
Just on it, I remember whenever we were talking about moving, um, and having extra space, you know, going to the public works building and stuff, that one of the things where we were gonna have more space for records. So I hate to go destroying records before we even moved. So I, I just remember that issue being on, maybe we'll have more space for records. And now we're destroying records.
And so I think, Missy, I, I understand your concern. At some point, I think we have to make a decision. Is that receipt from nineteen seventy-eight, are we ever gonna need that?
I don't know because, you know, it's, I don't know. I can't say, and we've got it, we've kept it this long, so.
Yeah, but it's audited and it's, and it's all severe and we're done.
Seven for, one against. Motion carries, yes.
You wouldn't want to know.
All right, uh, next item of new business, uh, Steve Winkler is gonna address the council concerning voting by ward.
I'll be brief. You know, I'm Steve Winkler. Yeah, I'll vote in for him. But I really try to, I know everybody wants to get home alone tonight. Uh, this is, we've got third appearance and talking about this issue before the council, uh, talked today at public forums. So you've got an idea of what, what this is about, pretty simple. But what I'm trying to do is address the problem that's come up tonight, it's civic engagement. Um, it's a problem in West Ford, it's not just West Ford, it's a national problem. Uh, we know that there are thirty percent of all the little city councils and school boards are, uh, having trouble keeping people on there. And, uh, and so thinking of what can we do to, uh, help people feel more connected to the city government, to feel closer to the city government? And, uh, one of the possible ways is to elect the people by ward. I learned from the mayor that larger cities do it. We are a city of the first class. We're allowed to do it. It's permitted by the state constitution. And what it means is that you would give a ward, your, um, people would run in that ward. So you, you gotta deal with about three hundred people to get elected. Not everybody in town. You don't put your signs all over town and that sort of thing. Now, I'm gonna point this out. I don't mean this to point anybody, but you gotta ask yourself who you represent. You know, about four of you have never gotten a vote. And there's a couple of you that have ran and never had an opponent. There are a couple of you that ran and beat somebody and the person you beat's sitting next to you. So you gotta say, well, what is this body really represent here? So, yes.
Let me, let me ask you a question.
Sure.
That's been brought up, and you're right. Absolutely right. I'm one of the people that's never gotten voted. But I'm still one of the people that is engaged and put the time in. So is that, is not as much value as someone that's been voted?
No, it's not.
Okay.
And the reason it's not is because we're in a democracy. The idea is that the people elect their leaders. Regardless of how good their leader, that value, you may be the best guy, you know, hottest thing since, uh, you know, butter and cornbread or something. You, that doesn't, that's not the issue. The issue is, do you represent the people of West Ford? And here's, with you particularly, you were appointed for to fill out a term and someone died. You didn't run when you had a chance to run. And now you've been appointed for a four-year term, right? So I don't see the connection between, uh, the people of West Ford and in a democracy sense. And there's several of you, you've done, you've, you've, uh...
You can go ahead and say my name.
Well, hell, you, you ran, but you ran out of vote. But that's what I'm saying, some people run out of vote.
I'm pleased with the turnout that I had for my community tonight. And I just personally take this personal as staff. And I know that you may not meet me in that way, but you just downplayed my six years of service and it's been, I love the city too.
Well, if you have some ideas that might be increased engagement, civic engagement. Besides, I tell them that people come in and complain about them.
I feel like we're pushing in the right direction right now as, as a city. We've got issues just like every other place. But I just feel like let's vote this and let's not take stab at people.
Who my paper said?
I just said let's vote and let's, you can finish and then let's vote on this.
We're not gonna take a vote on it tonight. We're gonna get it put in the bag so we can go as a council.
How is voting by ward gonna get someone to step up and run? That's what I...
Well, they only have to, they only have to, uh, campaign to three hundred people, not the whole town.
But they have to represent the whole town.
No, they represent the ward.
Anything that comes before.
Let's go, let's go one at a time, one at a time, one at a time, listen.
Well, personally, I didn't, I didn't really expect much opposition on this. I tell you the truth. I went and collected names. I went and collected names. I got out on a turn of man, it took me a couple of days. I didn't talk to anybody to reflect in what you're saying. Nobody. The only thing, I had two people that pointed out, said, well, you might have some pretty close elections. I said, well, you've had close elections before. I didn't have anybody pointing out what you're pointing out, Anita. Nobody. And I didn't have anybody, I mean, people say, oh, I thought we were doing it that way. That's when you tell them, no, you're, you're elected, you live in the ward, but you're elected by everybody. So, you know, you can live in the ward, but there might be the people in the other wards that are electing you. And if you don't think that that vote that a block is happening, then you're, you're not even...
How many other cities vote this way?
Besides?
Uh, Fayetteville does, and I think all the larger cities do.
No, uh, Fayetteville does, Little Rock does. The city attorney informed me that there are a couple other larger cities that do. There, there are no cities in the state under five thousand population that, that vote by ward.
They're too small. We represent the whole town. I understand what you're saying. But I would be glad, I, I don't just say, well, it's something, you know, you're not my ward, you need to contact someone, so. When I vote also as a citizen, I wanna be able to vote for people I feel like would do a good job on the city council, not just in my ward. At the city council, or the whole, so. That, and I did call some small towns and nobody's voting, they don't vote by ward.
Okay, well, then take your vote, vote against it. Because the next thing that's gonna come up before that I would have a city manager, because I'm telling you, in my opinion, this doesn't work. This is not working. This is a failure of government, right here.
He did have a city manager and you didn't like him either.
What's that? No, I'm the city manager.
Let's stay on topic.
But there's two types of, two types of government that you can have in a municipal, in Arkansas. You can have a mayor council and you can have a, a board city manager. So you get three people. That way you don't have to involve a lot of people. You get three people, they hire a city manager. He's a city manager. Butch was a, was a, he was a business manager. He wasn't the city manager.
See, I dispute what you say. I think this is working better than it has before. You are...
Well, you can dispute what you want there. I guess we're here to make our point.
Let's take your vote.
You've got a town here, but you've got a town here that's just practically on the edge of drying up and falling away. You've got infrastructure problems, you've got school problems, you don't have any commercial, you don't have any commercial activity going on. You know, what is, what's...
But I don't think dividing it by ward is gonna grow the city, make it any better.
Well, what we mean, what we mean is...
Yeah, we may turn around looking at it without a ward. Right now, I think we should.
As a leadership process.
Then people need to step up. I stepped up. I got elected. I'd be who I was against. The one sitting beside me. She and I have already talked about that.
Mr. Bagger?
Yes, sir.
What does it matter?
Can we put this to a vote, up or down, yes or no?
I'd like to.
Do you have anything else to say before we put this on? I'm not trying to cut you off.
No, you're right.
Your observations are right. The only thing that I take as a, is the fact you say it's a failure. It's not working. You know what? There are a lot of things that you're absolutely correct that need to be improved. But it all doesn't need to be shit canned, Steve. I take offense at that.
Let's keep her, let's keep her language, uh, up and up.
Look, I have, I have got a vote this time. I've voted for mayor a couple of times, I've got a couple hundred votes. How many votes have you got? How many people think that there's no one sitting here?
I don't know. I can't answer that.
It was two hundred.
All right.
Can we vote on this tonight?
So, so, hang on. I think, I think one of the things that, that I am really big on is pointing out that I don't wanna voting on emotion. And I think there's a lot of emotion that just transpired back and forth. So we are not gonna take a vote on this. I'm gonna encourage each member of the council to reach out to their, um, uh, their constituents. Thank you, Missy. And to research, uh, this issue. Uh, if this is something we wanna take back up another time, be more than happy to take a vote on it. But we're not going to deny it while we're in the heat of emotion.
I provided you with, uh, a list. You have the list in your packet, right, first names on that list. I encourage you to call those people. Those people have all stepped up and said they think it's a good idea. And so they're, they're at odds with this body. So call them up and see what to do and take a vote next week. Because you have to do this. You can't kick this can down the road because things have to happen at the county levels and it just happens. So, you know, call the people on the list. There's some heavy hitters on there.
So, uh, with that, I know there's some public comment. We're not gonna take it tonight. I'm gonna encourage you to speak to your council members about it.
That's my question. I don't know who my council member is.
Every person on this board?
Because I don't know what ward I'm in.
Every person?
We've heard of the...
The way it's set up right now? Doorbell's off.
No, that's not true.
That's not true. I'm gonna thank you for your, 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 I'm gonna sit down.
We do have... Can I say something, mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
We do have wards and you do have appointed people in those wards that are representative for you. But we all represent this community. So if you wanna know who it is, you call the city and you ask, what ward am I in and who are my aldermen? And they'll tell you.
And, and that's my bad because I should be more involved. I want to be more involved.